Call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
Mr. Secalli?
Here.
The meeting is now open to the public for comment for any items that appear on the agenda.
What's the agenda? I never saw an agenda, sir.
There is an agenda here for the public.
Would you like me to pass you one back? Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna-
This was never shared on your Cedar Grove website, the district website in advance, sir, so I just want to put that on the record.
So noted. I will, I'm gonna call my committee reports, and if there's an item on the agenda that you'd like to discuss, then you just let me know after our committee reports, and I'll reopen that portion of the meeting, okay? Mrs. Williams?
And also, just for future, for everyone, there's no yelling out from the crowd. We usually go up to the microphone and when you're addressed from the president, so no more yelling out, please. Thanks.
So noted, sir, but I wouldn't have to yell out if the public received the agenda in advance of the actual meeting.
Noted, but just so you know, our protocol. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any committee reports?
I have one from the January 8th North End FSA meeting. Just real quickly, they will be running their book fair here at North End coinciding with Read Across America. Read Across America, that's right. That's what I said there. Program February 24th, 25th, 26th. Family Night is February 26th. They are also in March doing an Alex and Annie event at a store in Ridgewood as a fundraiser, and there is a dinner dance on April 2nd at Rubellos'. So it's not their year to do the big fundraiser, but they do something just from a community standpoint. And that's what I have from North End.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? No? Mrs. Dye?
No.
Okay. At this time, before I move on to our board presentations, just go back on the agenda to open the meeting one more time to members of the public if anyone has a comment for any item on the agenda. Hearing none, I will reclose that portion of the meeting, and we're gonna move on to our board presentations. We have three of them this evening, and are we going in order up here?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna have our first presentation from Michael Knopka, talking about the Washington, DC for AP History, Government and Politics, and Economics classes. So, Mr. Knopka, welcome.
What we are proposing here is our fourth annual AP United States Government and Politics, AP United States History, and also AP Economics. Our class trip to Washington, DC. As I covered here, the trip will entail the three AP classes totaling 31 students to be chaperoned by myself, Mr. Steve Gallagher, who has worked with me over the past three years on this trip, and we've developed a good working relationship, and I'd like to continue doing so, and also Ms. Del Vecchio, the new addition to the DC field trip team, to be done on May 29th, a Friday through June 2nd. This is after the AP exams have already been completed. Typically, in the past, we've done it a week or two earlier, but there was a convention going on in DC this week, and it would've like double-tripled the hotel price, so we made the adjustment. That's why, if you're curious, why we changed the date and had to change the meetings, that's why. So how do we do this? The traveling to be done by Amtrak train, we go from Newark-Penn Station to Union Station in Washington, DC. It's the quickest, I don't know, most efficient method of travel because from the DC Union Station, Amtrak Station, we get right on the metro, and that takes us to Leinfaunt Plaza, which brings us to our, well, our final destination as far as where we'll be staying on the trip, which is the DC, the Holiday Inn Capitol, which is literally one block away from this metro station. Why we choose the Holiday Inn Capitol, I don't wanna stand in your way here. You see, it's located literally a block away from the entire, you know, National Mall here.
The reason why we haven't used the mic for the- (laughter)
All right, we're good. Located right here, like I said, it's a block away from the National Mall, the Capitol Building, the Supreme Court, the Washington Monument, all the monuments, they're all within walking distance. What that allows us to do is, well, to cut out all the other forms of travel to get more accomplished in, well, what is a limited amount of time. We've been to DC now three years in a row, and I can honestly say we haven't come close to seeing anything, anywhere near everything that Washington, DC has to offer. But being there, we, the kids like walking and seeing all the stuff, and, well, here's some of the things we have done in the past, we plan on doing again. Last year, actually, was the first year we were able to get in the White House. In previous trips, they had like the government sequester going on, and they had shut down the White House tours. That was pretty cool last year. As far as, you know, a lot of this different stuff, why do we think it's important? It's one thing to be in the history classroom, in the government and politics classroom, and we can, you know, we can read about these things, we can talk about them, but it's another thing entirely to be there, to experience in person, like walking through the White House where several, you know, presidents have obviously lived in the past and have gave, you know, noteworthy addresses to the public. You can go in all the different rooms and all the history behind that. It's really, really cool to be there and experience that firsthand and in person. Congressman Frailing Heisen has actually been very accommodating for us over the past three years. Each time, has invited us to visit his office in DC, and his staff has personally taken us down to the Capitol Building to provide a tour, cut through the whole line of all the rest of, I guess, the people in DC. It's a very tourist-popular time to be in DC, so they've helped us out, and they've got us, you know, cut down the time, the line, and go through some of the special, I don't know, things that the regular tourists in Washington might not get to see, like the underground trolley that goes from the Capitol offices down to the Capitol Building, where they actually have to like, you know, go to the floor and pass laws and stuff. That's been pretty cool. Supreme Court, obviously, been in the news lot lately. It's always cool to see and talk about. We talk about it all the time in government and politics. It's very cool to see. The other things that we have made like mandatory on the trip, obviously, we do a day trip, a walking tour of the monuments, and we also like to do it at night because if you've ever been to Washington, DC, I highly recommend going to see everything lit up at night. For one, there's fewer tourists in the area, you know, for picture purposes, but there's also a different element that you can't experience unless you're there at night to see it. The last thing that we make mandatory as part of our agenda is we go to Arlington National Cemetery, and we walk through there, we see the changing of the guard. It's pretty cool. Last year, and again, you know, putting a face to the history, they have these Honor Flight Tours where veterans, they pay for veterans of like World War II to go and visit all these monuments as their right is provided for them, a free trip tour. They were all there last year in Washington, and you see them all watching the change in the guard. Again, it puts a little perspective as to what you're actually looking at and watching, what you're witnessing when you're at that event, and I thought that was really cool. Some pictures from the past in front of the Capitol Building, White House lit up at Vietnam Memorial, and that's another thing, the history, to go there and, okay, we can talk about it in history class, but to go there and see the names on the walls and just how massive that wall is and how many names are on it. I still remember the first time I saw it in middle school. I tell the kids a story every year, and I'll tell it again, but I remember my principal from middle school was a Vietnam veteran, and I remember my first time ever been there is that night, we were on a class trip with everyone, came to the wall, and he was there, and you see him like broken down, like crying, like, and he came and he showed us the book, and he's like, "I knew him, I knew him, I knew him." And again, that's something else to talk about in history class, but for, you know, the younger generation of America, to get them to feel what that actually is and what it was like to be there and see someone who, you know, was there, and there's, every time we go there, you'll see veterans who were there, and they knew people. Again, it puts a little more depth to what we're talking about and what you can see in person there. This is the Marine Corps War Memorial, that's the famous Iwo Jima, right, flag raising. World War II Memorial, lit up at nighttime, again, something, go with the day, go in the night, it's completely different to see at nighttime, it's a whole different perspective. There's the changing of the guard here. Oh yeah, last year was actually the first time they opened the Washington Monument to go to the top because there was the earthquake in DC a few years back, and they had to do repairs to a lot of the structures in Washington, and I got up at like, I don't know, 6:00 in the morning and waited on the line because it was the first weekend it was open to the public in literally years, and I took all, I could get limited tickets, but I took all the seniors, and we got to go to the top. That's a picture of the top out over Washington at nighttime. Inside, this is Congressman Frailing Heisen's office, and he's got tons of artifacts. His family's obviously been in the United States and involved in politics for a long time. It's pretty cool to go there and literally see the history on the wall from his great-grandfather. He's got his, like, his desk from the old Senate, and he's got a story behind everything, and he knows everything about, and the whole staff knows everything about everything in that room. You ask them like, "Hey, what's this for?", and they'll tell you about it for, you know, 15 minutes. Bunch of seniors, we went on a little bike tour. It's also tradition now to, you know, dress up in patriotic attire and (laughter). I think that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
How many students are gonna be going?
Thirty-one total.
And it'd be the three of you chaperoning?
Correct.
And the cost is entirely paid for by the students?
By the students, yes, parents, or working, there's also potential fundraising, but yeah.
It looks like a great trip, and we've heard about it in the past from Mr. Gallagher, and we thank you for bringing it to us tonight, so did there maybe any further questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If that's for me, tell them all. Call them back.[836.12][836.12](laughter) Okay, our next presentation, Ms. Jesson is here to talk about the New Jersey-Vermont Music Exchange Trip. Welcome, Ms. Jesson.
Thanks. Okay. This is a different trip, educationally, music education, and we've done this in the past. Previous years, we've done a "You've Got a Friend" exchange concert with the music of James Taylor and Carole King, and then we did Les Mis in Concert, Les Misérables, with the same high school. And my best friend goes, or teaches the same program that I do at Mount Anthony Union High School in Bennington, Vermont. And please excuse my scratchy voice, it's musical season, chronic laryngitis. So we chose this year to do Hairspray, and it'll involve our choir, our band, and our orchestras together. I just wanted to make you aware that Mr. Savino and myself are incorporating the music and the time period, the plot of Hairspray, into our curriculum. The students will be studying music of the 1960s, not just the music of Hairspray, but also for our spring concert incorporating music from the 1960s. And students will be having discussions on the history and pop culture of the 60s. They're creating each a PowerPoint slide that we'll put together, and it'll be showing during our concert of personalities from the 1960s, music groups of the 1960s, history, all-important events from the 1960s. We'll be having full ensemble rehearsals with band, choir, and orchestra. Mr. Savino and I team teach at Period 5, and so in the hour periods, we'll be getting together and rehearsing that music together, and then sometimes with the choir. AP Music Theory has a big task, and that is to transpose one of the string parts for viola. We looked at the score, and the score has every instrument that we have except viola. And we have viola players, excellent viola players, so the AP Music Theory class is going to be transposing some parts for the viola players, as well as if any of our vocalists need transpositions, lower, higher keys, so it'll be a great assignment to get them ready for the AP exam. They'll also be analyzing the full orchestra score, which usually they only look at, you know, their part, soprano part, or violin part. We're gonna encourage them to look at the full picture. I just listed all the different things that, or where we're staying, or where we hope to stay. Their first payment is not due until February 11th because we wanted to get approval first, or first approval. It's called a stay-and-play package, and we stayed here before when we've done this trip. It's the Great Escape Lodge, which is very similar to the Great Wolf Lodge with an indoor water park and four kids to a room, and so they have the indoor water park, the breakfast buffet, there's an arcade, our bus can park there, there's discounts for our chaperones, and admission and meal plan to the park across the street, which happens to be now a Six Flags. And so there are our costs. The Friday night dinner contribution is, they have a Music Matters like we do, we have a Cedar Grove High School Music Matters, parents help make a potluck dinner, well, they have Mampa, and their parents will make a potluck dinner, but also order pizzas, so that's our contribution. Oop. Okay, there's our itinerary. There are a couple options up here. Friday, May 15th through Sunday, the 17th, is when we're proposing going from New Jersey to Vermont, and there's a total price for them, for all the kids that are gonna do that. Then we also, when Bennington, Vermont comes to us, we're rehearsing all day, Saturday, the 30th, but then Sunday, to get together with them more, we're planning a Broadway show trip to Honeymoon in Vegas, Jason Robert Brown's Honeymoon in Vegas, and then Lunch at the Hard Rock, and that's another cost. So the kids can do either trip, they have the option, what they can afford, what they'd like to do, fundraise, and we have to make a deposit soon, as you can see. What we're asking is for the students to be allowed to miss one day, would be Friday, May 15th, to be an excused absence. That would be the day when we leave probably 6:00 AM and get to Vermont between 8:30 and 9:00, and then rehearse all day. And then that night, we put on the benefit concert, which benefits their music department. We have approximately 45 to 50 music students interested, and again, their deposit will be solid on February 11th, and then we would have a better number for you. The chaperones are myself, Mr. Savino, and seven parents. Students have a choice to attend one or both trips. And Mr. Savino and I came up with some criteria because the music, it's difficult to put it together, it takes a lot of work, we found out with Les Mis. So they're required to practice the music, of course, at our rehearsals and outside, and to attend sectionals to work as a full ensemble. Mr. Savino comes on Mondays and Tuesdays during lunch, and then I have sectional rehearsals during lunch sometimes. And then we're gonna monitor their progress through performance assessments. We have a national music rubric that we use for large group ensembles. Any questions?
Do AP exams end on the 15th, or?
Correct. There is one student interested in going on the trip that's taking micro, yeah.
Economics?
Right, that morning, and I would subtract the transportation cost from his package. He still wants to go, and he's talking to his parents, and we have a Music Matters meeting February 11th, in which we'll discuss on how to get him to Vermont. There's a few kids that said they don't want him to go alone, and that they would do that as well with him. In the past, the bus filled up to Vermont, and we actually did have a parent bring her van with our instruments because we couldn't fit everybody. It would be Vanderhoof charter bus to get us there and back.
Thank you. Make sure you bring back lots of video and photos of the trip and- (laughter)
Yes, yes, and attend our May 30th concert at 7:00 PM.
Here, right?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have our final presentation, and this is our presentation for the, regarding the Park Exam. I can't believe now we're doing a Park presentation.[1286.33][1286.33](laughter) Wait, one thing. Oh, sure.
I'm so sorry, I mean, Mr. Mandela reminded me. I'm just gonna plug Your in Town, okay? It's a great, funny, witty musical that is February 26th to 28th. Don't miss it. Get your, get your tickets through Mr. Canella.
Online.
Online, sorry, online.[1308.51][1308.51](laughter) But I forgot to mention one of the most exciting things that a lot of you will take happiness in, as I have. Jelani Remy, a former student, Cedar Grove student, is now the official, well, starting in July, Broadway, Simba, and Lion King, okay?[1326.41][1326.41](applause) Yeah. He's still, he's still on tour, and of course, you know, finishing that up in July, he'll be the Simba in New York City. His poster is up all over, and the commercial, it's him, that's Jelani. But anyway, he's playing seaweed for us in our hairspray, and in Vermont. I sealed the deal with him before he got the Simba in New York, but yeah, he's playing our seaweed, which, you know, "It takes two, baby." That's, okay, that'll be Jelani.[1355.73][1355.73](laughter)
Thank you, Ms. Jesson. Okay, are we ready for our Park presentation?
Ready.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Featherman.
Are you kidding?[1371.33][1371.33](laughter) Thanks for coming out, folks. You know, the first thing I want to say is, looking at this room, it's, I wish it were filled up like this more often because I do feel like I'm with friends, and I mean that. We work so hard every day, doing the things that frankly others cannot, and I just want to thank you for that. And how cool is it to see, and I'm looking out again, I see mostly K5, K6, 7, 8. How cool is it to see what we're doing at the high school level and know that you helped shape these young men and women that were here, one of which still is, Attah Girl?[1418.13][1418.13](laughter)
And there's more seats over here.
Seats over here?
Come right across, you can just walk right in.
Appreciate it. I'll just finish by saying clearly, one of the things we do well here in Cedar Grove, as you've heard tonight, is provide the depth, the richness of an educational experience for those that are so inclined to be involved, right? We are small, the small engine that could, and we have been criticized for not having expansive programs as others do, but I argue, and I'm sure you'll agree, that if you're so inclined to be involved, you'll have a wonderful experience here at K-12, and thank you for that. You can applaud, I love applause.[1469.13][1469.13](laughter) Thank you. So we've had some fun, and no, I'm not going to sing. Only Jen Jesson can pull that off and exceptionally well, but we do need to talk a bit about, not a serious topic, but a very important one. It's the Park Assessment. So much of what you'll hear tonight is not new in terms of standard-based instruction and thinking and learning and pedagogy and technology. All these things have been going on since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution, but the Park Test is new, so let's talk a bit about that. So what is PARK? Well, as a chemistry teacher and biology teacher, I tend to sort of start from a broad lens, so here is PARK, it's the, as you see there, the Partnership for the Assessment of Readiness for College and Career, but you all knew that. Well, what is it? Yes, it's standards-based, it's aligned with the Common Core. We've all heard Pearson and the Educational Testing Service and their role, and certainly the content in which you'll be tested, not you, per se, although we'll get to how this affects you a little bit later, but more importantly, our students. So let's start with the standards, you know, certainly that road to the Common Core that we've all been traveling down since 2010, 11. Now, we've, we've had some turns in that road, haven't we? But I'm not afraid to say that in this room because this collective group is working tirelessly to get it right, and together, we're doing that. So we'll talk a bit about that tonight as well. More about the Common Core. We've been working on implementation and alignment, securing Common Core-aligned materials, K through 5, most recently this year. We've developed a district improvement plan, a long-term plan. Many of you have been involved in that process, and we're proud to say that we're putting our best foot forward and making progress. But what does the Common Core emphasize? Well, you see it there, we're talking about it. If you read the superintendent's reports, past and present, you'll hear all about, I think succinctly spelled out for you in bullet point form, what our teachers, K through 12, have been working on relative to implementing the Common Core, relative to preparing for PARK. It's been no secret what we've been doing, and in fact, we've been reaching out to all of our stakeholders, either through FSA or APT meetings, certainly board meetings, parent universities, parent academies, K through 12, talking about it and engaging the public. So we've been here, many of you have been listening, and beyond that, participating in the conversation. So what are some of the shifts? And again, we've talked about this, but here's that broad lens. The shift, focus on nonfiction, you can read it there for yourselves, mathematics, fewer but deeper concepts, real-world examples. Folks, it's happening, it's going on in your classrooms. I know that I've seen it, and it's exciting. What about history of assessments? Now, I'm going quickly because in part, we're going to be having a parent-community presentation on February 19th. At that time, we'll have the entire cabinet that you see sitting in the back there, dressed in their nice suits and ties and scovs and things, and we'll all be with you on that night to discuss in more detail where we were and where we currently are, and where your students, we hope, will be through hard work. But previous to this year, grades 3 through 8 took, yes, the NJAS, we're all familiar with that. In the high school, we were talking about the HESPA, and in small quantities, the ASA. And certainly, we can't forget about the NJAS in science in grades 4 through 8. And yes, believe it or not, the state still has us take the high school biology EOC, or End of Course Assessment. Not quite sure where that's going yet, but with the next generation standards being launched, we'll get you an update on that. So what kinds of assessment have we been doing here historically and currently? Well, you see them there, the SAT, the ACT, the PSC, and so forth. Map testing, we brought map testing in a couple of years ago in part to prepare for the Park Test. Map testing, as you all know, is done online. It's a Common Core-aligned assessment. We use it at the beginning of the year and predominantly at the end of the year to measure our students' progress. Boy, that sounds familiar, that formula, doesn't it? Well, it's been going on in New Jersey for a very long time, standards-based assessment. Let's talk a bit more specifically about PARK, the implementation of PARK this year. We're going live, we're operational. Let's talk a bit about that. The test will be given this year to grades 3 through 11. March and in May, we have the performance-based assessment, it's the first part, we'll talk a bit about that, and then in April, we'll have the end-of-year assessment. And then in April, we'll have the end-of-year assessment. Actually, it's probably May when we're doing that. So when will these tests be going on? Well, we're exclusively targeting the AM sessions. Now, as you know, you may have kids in different buildings, the AM session runs different times. So the tests generally will start 8:15 to 8:30 and end between 11:00, 11:30, maybe even as late as 12 o'clock. But the plan is to target the morning. Research shows that's when best to test and then leave the afternoon to resume the all-important instruction. You'll see we'll have large groups, we'll have small groups. We will be catering to IEP and 504 kids, we'll talk a bit about that, as this test does a nice job of embedding the accommodations. And it'll be all hands on deck. Every teacher and support person will be involved at some phase of the implementation. As for makeup exams, well, it depends on a number of things. It depends on which school you're in, but makeups will take place after the first couple of weeks of testing are done. Overview of what I just said. Let's look at testing time for grades 3 through 8.
Mr. Featherman, the previous slide. So those dates are what the state says you can, those are the ranges, the date the state has given us and then we schedule inside of those dates.
Exactly.
So we're not testing from March 2nd to March 27th.
Correct. I'm glad you clarified that. We're given a 20-day testing window from the state for both the performance-based assessment, which is the first part, and the EOI or End of Year part of the assessment. And so within those timeframes, we've sat down and we've calibrated the best times to assess our kids, sticking with the AM schedule in line with Johnson and Math. And we've, each of us have sat down and mapped it all out. I'll share a snapshot of the high school test schedule tonight. But what we will be doing within the next week or so is e-blasting to the specific parents that this pertains to, the exact schedule. Okay? So this is the window of time we have to work with, so between March 2nd and 27, we have our regular tests and all of our makeup tests have to be done. Likewise, when the EOI rolls around, the window opens April 27th, we're going to start right away, hope to get done as soon as possible, but we have until May 22nd. What you see here are the units of time that the DOE, the Department of Education, has outlined for us as a guide. And we use this information wisely to develop each of our schools' testing schedules. This is not rocket science, they're saying you have this much time in ELA and math, figure it out. You know how many kids you have, you know how many Chromebooks and laptops and workstations you have, have at it, local control, figure it out. And we've done that. And we will share that with you very soon. These are the middle school unit times. Here are the high school, or grades 9 through 11, unit times. Same thing, the state tells us it's this, use these as a guide. And get together with your team and your list of resources and the important players and develop your schedule. All of our schedules have been developed, maybe they need to be tweaked, we met again this morning to just sort of take a second glance, but we're pretty much there. So we were saying by Monday, we'll be e-blasting that information, we'll have a website set up for all of you to access in perpetuity, as well as a section of the Friday folder to visit anytime you like. Gotta love that Friday folder, huh? It really is a nice place to visit. Here's a glimpse of Mr. Mangilli's revised tentative PARC testing schedule. This is not the entire schedule, but it gives you some sense of how it is we're playing it out. There you have on Monday, March 2nd, we're getting started right out of the gate here, English Part 1, 75 minutes, 114 students, Day 2, and so forth. Again, it's just as we've done over the many, many, many years for NJASK and HSPA, okay, we're seasoned in in these strategies. Okay? Mr. Mangilli has an aggressive plan and by March 13th or so, if all goes well, he should be capturing those makeup testers at that point. Who made PARC? Where did this thing come from? Let's just talk a bit about this. Well, we all did. We all had a say, you know, in terms of surveys and meetings and at the state level, at the county level. Many of us had a seat at this table, contrary to what you may have read or heard. And it grew out of concerns, just as you see there, out of just how prepared we are in this global competition. New Jersey in particular has a great education infrastructure, but globally, there are concerns, right? So if the governor's task force gets thrown together with business people and college folks and educators like you and me, and here we are. So why PARC? Well, we needed a better test to measure how students do things. The old pen and paper variety just wasn't cutting it, wasn't giving us useful enough information on how we're teaching in the classroom. I believe, and I think many of you agree, despite what our differences of opinion are in terms of how this thing has come to fruition, I think you'll agree that this test will achieve what it's setting out to do. It's measured just how prepared our kids are or aren't for the future. Can we read and write critically, synthesize information? Can we develop an argument based on nonfictional text? Our kids can do that, but we want them to do it better. And I think the PARC test ultimately will help us do that. Let's stay the course. How about some rationale for the PARC? Well, it's measuring a lot of what the other standardized tests have done, what map testing does, what NJASK has done, HESPA, it measures the skills and knowledge of our kids. But it's going to do so in a very different way. We'll talk a bit about the dragging and the dropping and the highlighting and the way in which this test is very different from its forefathers. In terms of producing timely information, it's sort of a running joke right now because the state acknowledges that in the first year of implementation, this year, the word "timely" really, you know, is taking a bit of a hit. Why? Because the information, the scores, won't be given back to districts until probably late September, early October. Now, you're thinking, wow, Mike, you know, the school's starting, you know, the first week in September, isn't that a little late? How are you going to help place students in honors courses or basic skills programs? Well, we're not doing that the first year. And we've been open about that fact. The PARC test this year, in its first year of implementation, is not going to be used to do that. And our educators and our counselors and our administrative team is well aware of that. And so we have other ways of placing students in their chosen paths for 15, 16, without this test. Now, moving forward, the state assures us that the PARC test will be, or at least the results of which, will be returned to us much sooner, telling us early in the summer. That would be the summer of 16. Stay tuned. More rationale? Well, as I had said before, this test is very different. The PARC test is new, there's no question about that. If you've been online, you've seen these practice tests, or maybe even you've taken some of these tests yourselves, it's very different. Clearly, I know, as I look across the room, all these teachers, you all have been sampling these practice tests and questions, yourself, your students. We'll talk a bit more about that as we close the presentation. But we're actively participating in the types of tasks that your kids will be asked to do next month. But there's all kinds of neat things that we can do using an online platform, from text-to-speech for math and certainly in terms of the accommodations for 504 and IEP students, the things we can do. Now, from the logistical side of things, you know, we talked about this more this morning, there's a lot going on behind the scenes to select the different accommodations that students with IEPs need. But we're working behind the scenes with the technology folks very closely to make sure we get that right. In terms of the test assessing a full range of students, yeah, if you've taken those practice tests, if you haven't, I encourage you that you do, there's some really hard questions on it and there's some easier questions and there's a lot of them somewhere in the middle. So we're really going to find out what that full range of students can provide to us. It's engaging. We'll find out. You know, we piloted last year, we volunteered to do that, and again, kudos to the staff for taking this on. There were some issues with Pearson delivering the platform and we managed through that. But to watch the kids when it went well was reassuring, wasn't it? It was reassuring. The kids, you know, the kids don't have this archived stuff like we do in the back of our heads, you know, from the old pen and paper days. Our kids, they know how to drag and drop, they know how to highlight, they know how to move things around using an equation bar, they know how to do these things. For us, you know, we guide them, we give them some practice in the classroom and in many cases, I know my kids anyway, they're so much more proficient at it than we are. So how will it be different for students? Well, the students will get feedback on just how ready they are for college and career. Now, if you've seen the performance reports that were recently released from the Department of Education, you're looking at a superintendent who knows we have our work cut out for us. And I'm talking to a group of teachers who knows the same. But I also work closely side by side with you and I'm reassured that the work's getting done, that we're making the adjustments, the daily five, the café model. I love going into those classrooms and seeing how that's transformed what it is that we're doing. It's pretty cool. So the information that we get for our students will be just that, and for our teachers, it's how to improve instruction. What about the parents? Well, we were at a leadership academy, myself and a number of other administrators last week, and we got our first glimpse at the individual student reports, the test reports. And wow, I mean, we're talking about the next level here. You know, the NJASK provides these individual score reports, but the PARC consortium, those reports will really tell us something about our Janies and Johnnies. And for the states, wise of right now, there are 12 of us, 11 states plus the District of Columbia, that are still in the PARC consortium. So yes, we're going to be put into that large bucket of those 11 states and, and to at least at some level, be compared to those. How about the assessment design? Well, again, you're following along, as I'm sure you are, here's the PBA, the first part of the test, given March, and here's the end of the year, and here are some of A little different from the NJASK. How about ELA? There's your PBA on the left and EOI on the right. Different kinds of tasks. Kids will be watching videos, they'll be reading passages, nonfiction passages, and they'll be asking to simulate research and do some literary analysis and create their own narratives. They're not doing that in the NJASK, per se. And we're doing so online. Yeah, there's keyboarding issues that we've been working on. Our media specialists have been hard at work filtering all of our kids through, making sure they're at least partially proficient in keyboarding. We'll be ready. How about test features for all students? Well, there's lots of little gizmos that this test allows us to sort of use, that frankly, our kids are quite comfortable using, from highlighting to striking through answers, flagging, you know, they'll be a digital calculator that you'll see on one of our sample problems I'll show you. All kinds of neat little things that a pencil and paper test does not allow us to do. And again, our kids welcome this. They'll do very well in this environment. And it's not without our help. We are integrating these kinds of practice skills in our classrooms. Again, read through those superintendent's reports, you'll see at every grade level, you're doing practice tests and you're embedding your instructional practices around preparations for PARC. How about calculators? Well, some grades can use them, some can't, and these devices will be provided on the How about test preparations? Well, what have we been doing all this time? We've been doing a lot, tremendous amount, to get ready for this assessment. In addition to practice assessments, both online and on paper, yes, there's still value in paper tests, I'm sure all of you have given them this year. We've been participating in map testing for two years now, which I think has been exceptionally supportive of the next step. Our media center specialists, as I've mentioned, have been working on the mechanics that our kids will be expected to do. We don't want them to be surprised or be seeing something for the first time, oh, I click and drag, what is this? They won't be. And resources, we've got all kinds of things at our disposal that we're using, from the actual TestNAV 8 stuff, this is the actual Pearson site that allows us to give these practice tests. So we're not playing with these sort of artificial resources, we're playing with the real deal that Pearson's giving to us that simulates exactly what our kids will be doing on this Here's a sample question, we're getting close to the end here, sort of. I don't know if you can see that, but if you can look at a couple of things, we've got this toolbar here that allows kids to do different functions, and here's your digital calculator here. And the question itself asks kids to perform a multi-step mathematics solution. There's lots of these online and some of the resources we're going to be providing. Check it out, sit down with your kids one night after dinner and give it a go. Here's a PARC sample question from ELA. This is not the NJASK, folks. You're asked to do multiple things. If you can see here, it says, you know, you're going to be, what does it say here? You're going to watch a video and then you're going to read a couple of passages, and in Part A, you're asked to read these three passages and then select evidence from the article that best supports the answers. And you've got to click and drag two of these statements that support your answer. Different. It's not filling in a bubble, it's clicking and dragging down to the evidence box, oh, this one here, and drag it down there. So different. They'll be watching videos and interacting with content, with text. Pretty cool. So more on Cedar Grove's instructional preparation. Again, I'm being long-winded, just wait till the 19th, you think we're long-winded now. You better bring a pillow. All right. So, yeah, it's being done. We realize where we were in terms of the alignment to the Common Core, but none of us in this room have any preconceived notions of where we are in terms of the performance reports. So we embrace that to the extent that we're comfortable doing and we're putting the best foot forward. So we've got things going on, and not the least of which is professional development. We have been busy, we've been busy on articulation days, we are busy over the summer. The teachers have been great, they're coming in without pay to do the things that they know they have to do to get ready for things like the daily five and the café and words their way, and so it's happening. Impact of testing. Well, a little bit redundant here, I suppose, but more specific information, proven use of data. I was recently at a TechSpo conference last week and let me tell you, you know, capitalism abhors a vacuum, right? So here we are, this PARC assessment, and every other vendor down there is catering to a new way to gather the data, okay, package the data, you know, and provide teachers with rosters of students filled with specific data. And as I had mentioned to the board earlier today, you know, we've got some discussions to have in terms of the kinds of things we bring in to help manage this data. I mean, this data is only useful if you can disaggregate it and make sense of it because the individual test reports are just chock-full of all kinds of information. And when you have, you know, I think of a high school teacher, it's not 120, 140 kids, 150 kids? So we need to be, you know, take a hard look at ways of helping them organize and manage that data. And I'm confident the board will support us in implementing these new instructional pieces of hardware. So the impact on teachers, well, you know this, particularly teachers in grades 4 through 8, this year anyway, right, your median SGP scores are being, as we speak, calculated into your summative evaluation, right? That's not going away. The PARC test scores will come out and median SGP scores will be assigned to you based on your student rosters. And as for our administrators, well, your median SGP scores will be assigned to you based on your teachers' collective rosters. So there is a direct impact on our professionals' evaluation and student scores. And that's the plan, that's how we got here. And clearly, the instructional shifts, again, if you've been with us, you've been paying attention and following along. attention and following along, we're doing things differently in the classroom. How about technology preparation? We've been working on our team's preparation for some time, and it's not just the purchase of a couple of extra workstations, hardly. We've increased bandwidth over the last couple few years. We've upgraded internet network connections and so on and so forth. We're going to proctor cash so that we're better prepared when the test window opens. We're not worried about potential problems, because we'll have it here on our local servers. We've increased the amount of Chromebooks and workstations. That's true. We've done it ad nauseam. We have lots and lots of them, and those Chromebooks are pretty cool, aren't they? You like those Chromebooks? Kenya, what do you want, 50 more? I know. Yes, sure. I know. I'm with you. And we've also participated in all of that state recommended park readiness surveys, and we'll be taking another intra-district test simulation. We've got a tentative date for that, but we'll, basically what we're going to do is carve out some time and get bunches of our kids to log on to one of these test simulations and see how the system holds up. And I think we're going to be just fine. We'll let you know. Let's talk a little bit about graduation requirements. Not going to spend too much time, but we certainly will on February 19th. Park, as of right now, will not be a graduation requirement until the class of 18, 19. Okay? So the students that graduate in 2019, as of right now, have park as a graduation requirement, but that could and might change. So what are the graduation requirements moving forward after this year? Well, here they are. The state has given us an extensive list for both ELA and math, and this is what we'll follow. So our counselors have already crafted a plan, and they know which scores to be gathering, and our administrative team and teachers knows where we need to be pointing our kids in terms of having access to these tests that will get them out, right? Well, you notice the first part of this list includes park scores. So effective for the class of 2016, if you sit for park now and you score what will deem to be a passing score, whether you're in grade nine, grade 10, or grade 11 on that particular test, you would have met your graduation requirement. Not bad. If not, you can have a score of 400 for either the math or language arts. If you're successful on both, you've met that benchmark for graduation. How about the ACT? There's a number there. The Accuplacer, PSAT, the Armed Services Test, and last but not least, there is a portfolio appeal process that we haven't used since I've been here in about six years, but, you know, it's there. So there's a healthy list of things that our students should be striving for, and we're already talking about these benchmarks for graduation. May I opt out? The answer is no. There is no opting out. There's been a lot of talk about opting out, but as a public school, we are part of the state and federally funded program. The state requires 95% participation for us to maintain our funding. At least, that's the position today. That may change. I hope it doesn't, frankly. It'll be one less bullet in our gun to reinforce the value of this test. And here it is in italics, the value of this test. We're looking to use these scores for good, not to harm anyone, hold anyone back. We're using it to learn more about how your child is interacting with our teachers and the content. And we're going to use these scores to find out what they're learning and what they're not, and how we can improve instruction to improve college and career readiness. That's the point. Now, we're not unreasonable people. If you or someone you know is going to refuse to test, there is a procedure for that. You'll let your building principal know in writing that he or she, your son or daughter, will quote "refuse to test" on that given day, and we will certainly not turn them away from the front door. They can come in. We will set them up in a supervised location. It'll be warm and cozy, and they can work on, you know, homework or projects that they've been assigned. But we ask that you do send them to school with something to do, because we will not be providing an alternate educational setting wherein the curriculum is taught. We're going to be busy that day. So if you're going to refuse to test, we'll take care of you, but understand that there'll be lots of time while they'll be sitting there reading a good book. How can you help? Well, it's not funny, and I don't want to be flippant about it, but when you look at this list, right, I mean, it looks familiar, doesn't it? I mean, I'm a parent of two children, a middle schooler and a third grader, and these are the things my wife and I do all the time, whether we like it or not. And the park test hasn't changed that. It shouldn't have changed that. These are the things we do as conscientious parents, continue to do them. We've been doing them for years, for decades, haven't we? Not sure about the last one. Dragging and dropping and copying and pasting, although I know my son and my daughter are pretty proficient, as I'm sure your kids are as well. So upcoming events. So where can we spend a little bit more time exchanging information, ideas, concerns? Well, the first one will be Thursday. We had plans to have this one here, right, Mr. Kenny? Last week, and then it was going to be tonight, and then it was going to be, now it's Thursday night, and now they're saying more snow. And so, you know, these things have been in the works, but one thing at a time. The next opportunity we have will focus on park and special education. If that interests you, we'll see you on Thursday, 7 o'clock, in the High School Media Center. Mr. Kenny promises to do a little Donkey Shane and make, thank you very much, and make it as engaging and hands-on as is humanly possible. And if you know Mr. Kenny, I have no doubts he will deliver on that. And the big show here will be on the 19th. We're hoping, you know, we'll get a snow date out there as well. We'll send an e-blast out and advertise, again, the CGHS Media Center. It'll basically be this presentation with some extra practice sample tests, questions, and some other things. And if you want to email us between then and now and offer some suggestions for how we can expand on this, we would love to hear from you. For more information, you can parkonline.org, but there are a plethora of sources of resources out there. As I mentioned before, we're going to get those up on our website, and you can go through those at your leisure. Any questions? Yes?
Should I come up to the mic? I'm sorry. Was it ringing?
Yeah, you can come up here.
My name's Frank Mandala.
Yeah, can you fit through there?
You just have to state the name and address of the community.
Hi, my name is Tara Williams. I live at 7 Radford Way here in lovely Cedar Grove. First of all, I want to thank all of my son's teachers in Memorial Middle School. They are awesome. They have gone beyond what they really have to, especially given the fact they've been working without a contract since June. So I applaud my son's teachers. I think they're great, and I thank them for just really putting in energy and their efforts. So I'm just wondering, based on the October 2014 article in the Verona-Cedar Grove Times that basically said that the New Jersey Board of Education said that the Cedar Grove School District needs to align its Common Core, or rather, the English Language Arts curriculum and the math curriculum better with the Common Core. Now, if I understand it correctly, the park test next month is dovetailing or reflects the learnings or the teachings or the lessons from the Common Core. So my concern is, how can the results that come back be an accurate indicator of anything if there's this huge disconnect between the curriculum that isn't Common Core-aligned according to what the state said and the park test results that come through? So how am I supposed to interpret those if we reverse engineer sort of the chronology, the foundation that's supposed to be used, which is the curriculum to teach our children? And if that curriculum is not aligned with Common Core, and Common Core is aligned with park, then I'm concerned.
You're not alone in your concerns, Mrs. Williams. We are aware of what the CUSAC committee came in and interpreted for us, what was going on in our district. But to characterize it as a huge disconnect, I think, would be incredibly inaccurate. And so why did the scores from CUSAC reflect the numbers they did? Well, first and foremost, they really hit us on the fact that our K-5 instructional materials weren't more current. They weren't new enough to be quote "aligned to the Common Core."
And that's because of why?
Let me finish. Let me finish. Now, that's not to say that every teacher in this room wasn't doing the best they could every day to supplement those antiquated K through 5 materials to align their daily instruction and lesson planning to that Common Core. And as a superintendent who's got his boots on the ground, I'm well aware of what our limitations are, what our strengths and weaknesses are, but I certainly know that the strength is our acuity of what it is you're referring to and sort of sensationalizing. We are aware of it. We've been discussing it since July. We're not happy about it. I've met with most everyone in this room. I've participated in professional development in the summer with most of the people in this room, and we've done nothing but accept the fact that we have our work ahead of us, and I've seen nothing, or close to nothing, to say that we're not making an incredibly positive effort to do that. We have map testing that's been doing so for two years. That is aligned to the Common Core. We're getting positive results from that. So we're not operating in a Common, we're not operating in a Common Core vacuum here. We're using assessment materials to help gauge where our alignment issues are, and in spite of the fact that historically some of our materials weren't current enough, we've been doing a pretty good job.
Can you talk about some of the long-term plans that you submitted to the state? I believe the state mandated a long-term plan to further align our curriculum with the Common Core, sir?
Sure. I'm glad they did, and so is everybody in this room, because it gives us a perfect excuse to sit down and use our resources and our time and our energy to focus on what we already knew was one of our issues, and that's Common Core alignment. And so we sat down beginning last summer with a group of people from each different stakeholder, and we developed a district improvement plan and a long-term plan that includes the purchase of awfully expensive language arts and soon-to-be mathematics instructional materials to help bring our materials to the 21st century. And we're glad that we've had the opportunity to focus on it, and I couldn't be more proud of the progress we're making.
And let me just add, Mrs. Williams, I know you've been asking me for that long-term plan since Thursday, and just so you're aware, Mr. Featherman was out of the district. He's aware that you're interested in seeing that. I've spoken to him about it. We did have a snow day yesterday. Today, he and I discussed it, and I thought it was already up on the website. I was incorrect. However, it will be going up on the website in short order, so you'll be able to view that plan, as will every teacher and parent in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Sikala. I also, it's heartening to know that more information is going up on the website. There are some parents who do not participate in some of these groups, these parent academies, so they are sort of operating in a vacuum unless they go out and actively seek information on a piecemeal basis. And Mr. Decourt, he's great. He listens to all of my questions, and he's very patient, but I think if we can communicate on a higher level with more people at once, we don't have to, my words, waste people's time by trying to pull information on a piece-by-piece situation, by situation type of timeframe here. So I would request more information shared at a higher level in other areas or through other channels, because again, like I said, many parents, or this parent does not participate in this parent academy group, so I would not know the information that you had mentioned was communicated through these parent academies.
Understood, and I agree. We can't be proactive enough in getting this information out to those parents that may not be so inclined to go to FSA and APT meetings and attend these parent academies. We've even filmed some of them. We've posted those recordings on the website, so we're not running away from it. We're providing it. We'll provide more, and we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Welcome. Can we just get the lights back on and get a chance, please? Okay, well, thank you for that presentation, Mr. Featherman.
You're welcome.
That park information has been a, I know you've been working on it for a very, very long time, putting it all together. It's been a work in progress for several years, and it's great to see this, because now we have an idea of what the culmination of all your hard work and all the people in this room's hard work has been over the last several years. So thank you for that, and we look forward to hearing more on the 19th.
If I may, not to belabor the point, but in addition to the teachers, I don't want to single anyone out, but the group of administrators in the back live this every day, and I'm envious of the fact that they're in the buildings every day, and they can hear your concerns and they can respond to them, and I think you'll find that they've been receptive to the things you've had to say. And things like this, these presentations, wouldn't be possible without their input from the front line, frankly. You know, a superintendent's job takes me away often from what's really important, and I know that. I mean, I struggle with that, but I know that. You know, my job is to do things that they cannot per se, because their hands are tied every day with the good work. So thank you for that.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes, may I have a motion for B1 through B4? That's a motion on B1 to approve the public and executive minutes of January 6, 2015. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of January 2015. B3 is a motion to approve the, excuse me, the treasures report for the month of December 2014. And B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code that no line item, account, has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the appropriation and violation of the code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for B5, which is a motion to pay the bills that were provided to us in our packet dated January 27, 2015?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Yes. Under business, may I have a motion for B6 through B13? B6 is a motion to approve travel to and related expense reimbursement for the staff as listed. B7 is a motion to approve MTM Metro's final payment application in the amount of $4,790 for the removal and disposal of asbestos as set forth in that item. B8 is a motion to retroactively approve MINAGIA to use the LRP gymnasium for a video shoot. B9 is a motion to appoint Lincoln Landscaping to perform spring 2015 track and field maintenance as set forth in that item. B10 is a motion to approve a waiver of the SEMI program for the 2015-2016 school year for the reasons set forth therein. B11 is a motion to approve the submission of the IDEA Part B FY 2015 grant as set forth therein. B12 is a motion to approve William Xavier, Montclair State film student, to use the high school cafeteria on the date set forth therein. And B13 is a motion to retroactively- And B13 is a motion to retroactively approve the use of facility rental at the Cedar Grove High School Cafeteria for the Cub Scout Pinewood Derby as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandell?
Aye.
Mr. Sacala?
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent, Mr. Featherman, I believe you have the superintendent's report?
I do, thank you, Mr. Sacala. I don't know, we've got a bunch of copies of the report here, if you want to come up and grab some, I didn't realize there'd be this many people here, so you can share. And if you can't get your hands on a hard copy, it'll be posted online in short order, you can certainly read through them. And what you'll find is a recognition of countless successes going on in our classrooms K through 12. Please spend time reading through them. It's a great read, the text is rich, it's descriptive, and it lets you know, hey, we're doing great things! And yeah, things like park and Common Core, you'll find it embedded throughout the report. So rather than go through that, what I like to do is read letters from four very special people. Dear Mr. Featherman and Mr. Mangilli, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to teach in the Cedar Grove School System. You and the various Boards of Education, superintendents and principals have allowed me to live my dream of being a high school English teacher for 33 years. Teaching has brought much joy into my world and I have thoroughly enjoyed my experience. My dream has changed. After much thought, many years, and tears of both sadness and joy, I've decided to retire at the end of this school year. Please accept my resignation for retirement effective July 1. Best wishes to you for a successful run. It's been a fulfilling ride for me. Dear Mr. Featherman, this letter is to inform you of my intention to resign my position as a music teacher with the Cedar Grove Board of Education for the purpose of retirement effective June 30. This is one of the most difficult decisions I have had to make in my career. Basically, I've spent my entire teaching career in Cedar Grove since 1972. I was three years old. As I have mentioned to you in the past, I feel especially grateful that I had the opportunity to return to Cedar Grove Schools after I raised my children. I have worked with so many wonderful administrators, teachers, and children, it has been an amazing journey to see all the changes in the district and the changes which occurred in education since I began teaching. Exclamation point. I especially am grateful for the support you and the Board of Education have given to me and the music program during those years. Teaching elementary school music takes a lot of energy, and I feel this is the time for me to retire. This will give me the opportunity to spend time to travel and enjoy my grandchildren. Thank you again for all the kindnesses you have shown me. Sincerely, Evelyn Obendorf. Dear Mr. Featherman and members of the Board of Education, and to you all, after much thought and with mixed feelings, I've decided to retire at the end of the current school year. Please accept this letter as notification of my retirement as physical education and health teacher effective July 1. It has been an honor and a pleasure to have worked in a fine as district as Cedar Grove, and I will carry many wonderful and fond memories with me as I leave. I was originally interviewed and hired by Superintendent Ken Bechtel, and I have taught for my entire career despite a long leave of absence for health reasons in Cedar Grove. At this time, pardon me, I would like to express my gratitude to you for your support during my tenure in the district and for all of your efforts on behalf of the students, faculty, and staff of the Cedar Grove Public Schools. Although I am looking forward to retirement, I will miss my students and I will miss teaching in such an outstanding school district. Lastly, I wish the best for the Cedar Grove administrators, teachers, staff, students, and parents, many of whom are former students of mine. Sincerely, Louise Aubel. And lastly, but not leastly, dear Mr. Featherman and the Board of Education, this letter is to inform you of my retirement as of June 2015. This decision has not come easily, as I have given this a lot of thought. I have taught for 25 productive years here in Cedar Grove, teaching the subject I love most. I feel I am so lucky to fulfill my passion, my love for the arts, every single day I walk into my classroom. I am an artist first, adhering myself to the art of creating since I was five years old. I painted, drew, collaged, and sculpted anything that expressed the power for invention throughout my childhood, through high school, and finally, college. It was there I realized I needed to share my visual expression, and that is how my career got started. A decade later, after graphic design employment, owning a business, and two amazing children, teaching art became my new passion. I feel so fortunate that I had the opportunity to teach in Cedar Grove, a place where family and education are so significant in this community, as you cannot have one without the other. I have had the pleasure of working under the guidance of caring administrators, as I could not ask for more supportive principals and vice principals all my years of teaching. I think it's rare to work for 25 years in the same place with many different bosses and coworkers and still love the job. I have also had the pleasure of working with a very supportive staff, from the elementary to the high school, many of whom friendships will continue long after retirement. My teaching family also includes parents, as well as many students, who count on me to make a difference in their lives every class I teach. I am very grateful for that fulfillment. It is this connective force of people, from students, parents, and faculty, to our administration and Board of Ed, that embody the complete teaching dynamics that are essential to education. Thank you for 25 years of support and belief in me to best serve this community as a teacher and as an artist. I will treasure every moment of every year. Thank you, Barbara Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman, that sure beats the superintendent's report, but I will be sure to read it, as I hope everyone else. From the Office of the Superintendent under Personnel, may I have a motion for S1 through S17? S1 is a motion to approve a superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to approve Jacqueline Giometta, South End Phys Ed Teacher, maternity leave teacher, beginning February 12, 2015, for the remainder of the school year. S3 is a motion to approve the retirement of Evelyn Obendorf, South End Music Teacher, effective June 30, 2015. S4 is a motion to approve the retirement of Louise Aubel, MMS Physical Education Teacher, effective June 30, 2015. S5 is a motion to approve the retirement of Barbara Frye, MMS Art Teacher, effective June 30, 2015. S6 is a motion to approve the retirement of Yvonne Migliaccio, High School English Teacher, effective June 30, 2015. S7 is a motion to approve the submission of the 2014-2015 Statement of Assurance to the New Jersey Department of Education, as per the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. S8 is a motion to approve on second reading the proposal to allow the Cedar Grove High School Varsity Cheerleading Team to participate in the battle at the Boardwalk. S9 is a motion to approve on second reading the proposal to allow the Cedar Grove High School Boys Baseball Team to participate in the preseason trip to Orlando, Florida. S10 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers as listed. S11 is a motion to approve the school volunteers as listed. S12 is a motion to approve the substitutes for the 2014-2015 school year as listed. S13 is a motion to authorize the attendance at the events as listed in that item. S14 is a motion to approve the students listed in that item for classroom observation. S15 is a motion to approve Nicholas Murphy as head girls' track and field coach as set forth therein. S16 is a motion to approve Nicholas Murphy as head cross-country coach as set forth in that item. S17 is a motion to approve Christina Ruggiero, girls' assistant track coach as set forth therein. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, Mrs. Obendorf, it said South End Music Teacher, but it should be North End and South End.
Thank you.
Number S3.
We'll note that correction in the agenda. Any further discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli? Aye.
Mr. Mandell?
Aye.
Mr. Sacala?
Yes. Under Policies and Regulations, may I have a motion to approve on first reading the policies as set forth in that item? And, I'm sorry, and on S19, a motion to abolish the following policy, the policy set forth in that item, 1522, on first reading. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Featherman, before we vote on that motion, I would ask you if you can please review the policies that we have on the table at this time?
Will do, thank you. I feel like Mrs. Jess, the voice is getting scratchy here, I know. Don't typically do this much talking. I'm a listener, you see, I like listening to people rather. So what I'd like to do is read a brief synopsis of those policies and regs that are being revised, updated, and/or abolished. 1522, school-level planning will be abolished. This code provision was repealed because the Quality Annual Assurance Report has been replaced, as we all know, by NJCUSAC. Therefore, Policy Guide 1522 is to be abolished by the BOE with a simple motion, as it is no longer required. 2361, acceptable use of computer networks and computers and resources, it's a revision. This code provision requires school districts to update their acceptable use policy, or AUP, to state the district is, educate is, quote, "educating minors about appropriate online behavior, including interacting with other individuals on social networking sites and in chat rooms in cyberbullying awareness response." School districts may determine how this education is provided to pupils, and a revised AUP is being developed by our Technology Committee as we speak. 5305, Health Services Personnel, revised. New Jersey Administrative Code has been re-adopted with minor revisions. This code section prescribes roles and responsibilities of the school physician, certified school nurse, certified school nurse non-instructional, and non-certified school nurse. The most significant revision eliminates the specific services a non-certified school nurse can provide, and indicates the non-certified school nurse will perform services permitted under the non-certified school nurse's license issued by the State Board of Nursing. This revision was made to give school districts increased flexibility to use these nurses to provide specialized care as appropriate and as permitted by their license, resulting in potential reduced cost to school districts. Policy 5306, Health Services to Non-Public Schools, is a revision. New Jersey Administrative Code has been re-adopted with minor revisions. This code section prescribes a school district's responsibility in providing school health services to eligible students that are enrolled in a non-public school within the school district boundaries. The minor revisions to this re-adopted code section have been incorporated into the revised Policy and Reg Guides 5306. Policy and Reg Guides 5306 outline mandated responsibilities of a school district that has a non-public school within its boundaries. A school district that does not have a non-public school in its boundaries does not need to adopt this policy. 5308, Student Health Records, is a revision. New Jersey Administrative Code has been re-adopted with minor revisions. This code section prescribes the school district's responsibility in maintaining and transferring student health records while limiting access to and disclosure of such information pursuant to law. 5310, Health Services, revised. Health Services Policy and Procedural Requirements and New Jersey Administrative Code 6A 16-2.2 Required Health Services have been re-adopted with minor revisions. The first section of the Policy Guide that listed all the policy requirements has been removed from the code and removed from the Policy Guide, as the New Jersey Department of Education indicated these policies are required in other sections of the code, and there is no reason to list them in this section. The other changes in the Policy and Regulation Guide are minor. 5339, we're all aware of this one, screening for dyslexia, it is new. New Jersey Administrative Code Regarding Screening for Dyslexia was approved and codified. In summary, the new statute requires every school district to screen students who have exhibited one or more potential indicators of dyslexia or other reading disabilities with a screening instrument provided by the commissioner. And P.S., the district may use one developed on their own. 5530, Substance Abuse, is a revision. Procedures for Alcohol and Other Drug Abuse Intervention has been re-adopted. The re-adopted code provides clarification when the superintendent may and must disclose the identity of a student to law enforcement authorities, depending on whether the student is under the influence of alcohol or other drugs, or has in their possession or distributes certain substances on school grounds. The statute, New Jersey SA 18A 40A-9, defines substances, and the Administrative Code 6A 6-41A expands the statutory definition of substances. There are few places in the Administrative Code that reference, quote, "other drugs." However, the term "other drugs" is not defined in the statutes or in the Administrative Code. Therefore, and finally, the Revised Regulation Guide 5530 includes a definition for "other drugs" and includes substances as defined in Administrative Code. It's important stuff. Just takes a lawyer to write it. 5600, Student Discipline and Code of Conduct, it's a revision. New Jersey Administrative Code 16A 16-7, Student Conduct, has been updated. This chapter includes the requirements for a code of student conduct, conduct away from school grounds, and student records and confidentiality. The revisions are not significant and will not change the manner in which a school district administers its student code of conduct. And lastly, I believe it's lastly? It is, thank you. 5756, Transgender Students, this is new. School districts have requested a Policy Guide regarding transgender students. New Jersey's Law Against Discrimination, NJLAD, prevents discrimination or harassment on the basis of transgender status, gender identity, or gender expression. However, there is little guidance from the New Jersey School Districts on a reasonable identification process and the accommodations to be made for an identified transgender student. Policy Guide 5756 has been developed considering laws in other states and the position of various advocacy groups. This Policy Guide requires a student's parents to be involved in the identification process, enables the school district to make a reasonable inquiry into the asserted gender identity if there is a credible basis for believing the identity is being made for an improper purpose. The policy is not specific as to the accommodations to be made for an identified transgender student, and indicates the superintendent or designee, and the parent and child will meet to discuss such issues as name and pronoun to be used, restrooms, locker rooms, et cetera. This Policy Guide is very general, as there is no statutory or administrative code guidance on this issue as of yet. A school district considering any transgender policy should have it reviewed by the board attorney before presentation to the board for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman, and I know the board is aware, but just so the public is aware, any of these policies that are adopted have to be adopted on first and second readings, so tonight we'll put them up for, we've put them up for approval on first reading, and we'll bring them back at the next meeting for final approval. Does the board have any questions about any of the policies? Have roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandell?
Aye.
Mr. Sacala?
Yes. Under Curriculum, may I have a motion for S20 and S21? S20 is a motion to retroactively approve Jackie Seigling for curriculum writing as set forth therein, and S21 is a motion to approve Joe Cardinal for curriculum writing for the new business course as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those two items, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandell?
Aye.
Mr. Sacala?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting for comments from the public for items that are either on or off the agenda. for items that are either on or off the agenda. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Our announcement of future meetings, we have our next meeting on February 24, 2015, in the North End Media Center, right here, 7:00 p.m. for executive session, public session, beginning at 8:00 p.m. And March 10 is the follow-up meeting to that, here, 7:00 p.m. for executive, 8:00 p.m. for the public session of the meeting. Does the Board have any final comments this evening?
I think we're done.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyne?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandella?
Aye.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Thank you all for coming. Meeting is adjourned.